At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Mr. Kazook?
Present.
All present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Kazook, I do want to remove the school activity fund report. We have one school we've not received yet, and they have some sick family at the bookkeeper does, and she just didn't get it to us. So, we can do that at the next one, even we have another one at June 28th anyway. So, when we get down to consent agenda, we'll strike C on that. But besides that, I have no other adjustments or amendments to make to the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comment or make a comment?
I would. If nobody else does, I'll see if they can go first. Back about probably two months ago, I talked to a meeting about this walkway across here. Architect was there, and Michael told him, he said, "Get us some figures on that." Whatever, look at it. It's been two months. Do we need a new architect, or is he gonna look at it?
I can follow up with him, Mr. Murray, and tell you, to be honest with you, I have not followed up with him since that date, but I will.
He should have followed it up with us, though. I mean, he works for us, we don't work for him.
They were right.
I mean, somebody told me, he said he went outside and got his Porsche and headed on out, so. I don't know, maybe you don't need the money, maybe we need to get another contractor or architect, whatever. I mean, we're talking about keeping our children dry on this walkway from thunderstorms, and, you know, won't get hit by lightning and walk anywhere. We're gonna wish it had been there a long time ago. But I wish maybe look into that.
I will.
If we don't pursue it, maybe we need to look into somebody that will.
I will send him an email this evening. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Next item is recognition.
There's nobody that likes recognition any less than the lady I'm gonna recognize.[187.55][187.56][laughing] Get up here, Ms. Lori. Was I pretty accurate in what I said? So, we were gonna do this earlier in the season, but fortunately, we had some good ballgames, didn't we, Mr. Lori? She couldn't come to my last meeting. Ms. Lori has been with this before, and at that point, she was the guidance counselor, the elementary school guidance counselor of the year, and now she surpassed that, and she's the guidance counselor of the entire state, representing Kentucky with that. And so, they were talking about this.[221.88][221.89][applause] Is there another next step?
I guess, for the, I guess for the United States, there'll be another level, but that one will entail some other categories. I have to submit some plans that we do, things that we do in our school, and things like that, so if we move on to the next level, we'll be at Washington.
Yeah, so she's in the running for that now. So, we started off last year at elementary school guidance counselor of the year, and now we're the Kentucky School Counselor Association School Counselor of the Year, and I know we did the banner and all that, but we want to recognize you at the board meeting as well, Ms. Lori. So, we have a plaque to present. Russell County Board of Education presents the Lori Law and recognition of Kentucky School Counselor Association School Counselor of the Year, Russell County Schools. It says May 20th, because that was the other board meeting.
Yes.
2024, but we appreciate you, Ms. Lori. Turn that around there.
We need to have a bus, you know, ready to send off or anything.
Oh, for the national, that would be good. We appreciate you, Ms. Lori, all that you do.[281.91][281.92][applause] Your fourth grade student did okay there, Ms. Lori.
That's right. Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Ms. Lori. Is it Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
And Mr. Davidson, come on up. Mr. Davidson is a Western Kentucky University Distinguished Educator Award finalist, and we have a certificate, Mr. Davidson, from Western Kentucky University Distinguished Educator Award finalist, presented to you for the middle grades division, and then we didn't want to be outdone by Western, so we wanted to give you a certificate as well. So, certificate of recognition, warning to Mr. Jason Davidson regarding Western Kentucky University's Distinguished Educator Award finalist for middle grades, sixth to eighth division. And Mr. Kazook, I'm sorry, I forgot to get your signature. We can't give that to you until I get your signature on that.
Isn't that the best of the best? Not in we've ever done it.
And there's a letter from the county in there as well. Put Mr. Zach here and John.[355.45][355.46][applause] Anything you want to say?
No.
What?
I love Russell County.
Ms. Yoli is surprised.
I cannot believe you don't have something to say.
Thank you all.
It's going to the pool.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
So, as I noted, we will strike C, the school activity fund report, so this consent agenda will include the previous meeting amendments, payment of bills, field trips, and Ms. Carnes has the treasurer's monthly report to present.
Treasurer's report for the month of May 2024, balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $15,89,568.86. Total receipts for the month were $2,417,149.20. Total of receipts and beginning balance together is $17,506,718.6. Disbursements for the month were $4,536,356.87, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to $12,970,361.19. In fund balances, the general fund, Fund One, $9,629,153.41. Special projects, Fund Two, $234,388.65. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, negative $242,780.63. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $275,503 even. FSPK building fund, Fund Three Twenty, $432,357.74. Construction, Fund Three Sixty, $1,765,360.67. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred Zero. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $873,250.65. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,127.70. Total cash and bank for all the funds is $12,970,361.19.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. So, if there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items with the omission of item C, the school activity fund reports.
Is there a motion? I make a motion to that effect. Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson? Higgins? Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is football fieldhouse location.
So, you all know, at a previous board meeting, we discussed, we had the schematic design, and we also discussed some tentative locations for the football fieldhouse location. I'll ask Mr. McGowan if he wants to come up now. That mister threw him off, Jackie.
You got a mister.
That mister threw him off. Darrell, he didn't know who I was talking to, and I said, "Mister."
I guess the best thing just goes through this. You know, things change, you go along funding, and things that you can do, will do. This was a pad of a building for the football locker room and stuff very old. But actually, what we done was the extra dirt we had on the other project and stuff, this actual hall and stuff, we would seal that all in, and this actually can be a parking lot now in these other places that work. So, I don't, I've argued against putting a football field here, or a place, a locker room here all along. There's two or three other places to put it, right here and right here, and then that. Actually, I probably spoke out of turn earlier at one meeting, and said, you know, it's cheaper to be able to hear it is, probably. There's not that much cost difference, it's easier to put it here. But the, me and Mr. Ford argued about it plain and private. I've always thought this, there's a lot of good stuff out from here, this is actually wasteland. It's a bank, never gonna use it for anything else. And what we've got designed on this is we have a concrete wall here down the back, because this is set within six foot of the, on the property line, just across the fence. It does tilt just a little bit towards bleachers. Looking on this flat sheet, maybe that don't look too good, but if you get up there in the bleachers like Mr. Ford has and stuff like that, and it's actually tilted, you know, where that you can see from. And an idea we had, you know, later on maybe, but one of this is gonna be like 18-foot tall, and what was talked about, you had known it was like a flat, light-colored town. If you decide to later, you could actually probably run replays on yourself, or if your daughter was in the homecoming, they could actually be showing it on this. Now, I'm not saying if we're gonna do that, but you've got that possibility to do it. And if it's pointed right towards the bleachers, where it's easy to see, like I said, it's back here, the land that you'll never use, you're gonna have to keep it mowed, it's gonna grow up brush or something if you don't. And by doing that, we gained enough land also that intersection dirt we had, that we built this on out and down, and we'll hold and put a road always through here. When we built this football field right here, the first thing we're gonna wanna do is, you know, the first practice they have, they're gonna need to take coolers back there, and they're gonna need to take equipment stuff. So, that, you know, make this road feasible to build back there, plus at the same time, this, you know, is a locker room, restroom room for the visiting. That building just kept growing. This is the third, let's say, is what we've got now. And the idea we started out with, this would be used for the visitors, the restroom, public bathrooms, and concession stands, and so we got into it, except with football field back there, and the youth league, and then coaches for the youth league, and this and that, that's why it grew just a little bit. This building here is 30 by 120. This got your locker rooms, and everything on this end, which was proposed, and the kids come out this way, and come across, and up, and in the field here to come in to the game on, see the yard line, that way they come right out the crowd, and then we'll have another gate right here, that's a halftime order, they just come in here. We've got your coaches' office and everything in the center of this building. They can pretty much, the way we've got this design, this head coach can set his office and pretty much see everything goes on out here, so. The other end is just, we wound up building for a game review and stuff like that, like what Mr. Ford, and they got their big tank in there and a bunch of the supports, you know, that, like medical stuff. But I think this is the best place you've got.
There's restrooms and showers, too.
Yes.
All of this got restrooms, showers, locker rooms. You're a head coach, you've got a big office for a head coach, you've got another office for your other coaches, plus your referees, and they share a bathroom and a shower, you know. And then you've got all your showers and everything here. Also, over here in this one, I'm glad to admit that, you know, is, that's something else that grow this one up here, too. It's things to change a little bit, and one thing that, you know, they taught us on this turf, was to try to make sure that the kids all took a shower after they played on turf. And therefore, this building grows just a little bit here, because we wound up with full showers, I think, what Mr. Ford.
Is that holding the schematic back up? I think that's right.
Full showers in this building for the visiting, so they can shower for the visiting.
Neither of them need to do that.
This is not grass, and germs don't die on this quays, it's just grass, or the ground water.
The trainer that comes out here and talks to us about how to take care of the field, he says, "When you play on grass, you get dirty, and you know it, and you take a shower." And here, you're still rubbing up against one another, and all the sweats and everything, but you don't appear so as dirty, because it's on turf. But he said, "Remind the boys, they still need to be taking showers." Yes, because...
They, they...
Just good protocol.
They re-invent, you don't have pretty good, not sure, try to make it a picture. Is there anybody, any question, Don, or?
Well, you know, talking about moving down to this lower side of the line, taking it off of turf, that also enlarges that lot there for future references, so you appreciate that, don't it?
Well, one argument that we had, if this is frowned property right here.
Right.
This is, if your grandmother and grandfather, you know, I know you got everything handicapped there and stuff, say that, well, my wife, she wouldn't be very comfortable right here with her, whether it's her car, she wants the whole game. Plus, they'll do, she had another idea, you know, just down to here, like when their pay-fee parties and stuff, that you actually, if you make this, and he suggested putting, I would put grass out there, like he suggested, you know, that, but you might want to look and put lacy down there, like when they had the pay-fee parties, so. He said you sell them and stuff like that, even to, you know, the Luna, where it'd be at the highest, they got the best points, you know. Something else this does, too, he just, well, I get to talking, maybe I talk too much, but when you come in here to track, they're gonna set up tents in the track, you know, and they want this, we got a haller down there, and they wanted us to develop the haller, because they said that was my ideal place out there on the views, they set up for tents, and all the kids go down there, that way they're out of, they're out of elements and stuff. This right here is another place that, you know, your, your other teens that come in there, so, if they set up right here, if you got lacy here, they can all come and get this one tent under tent, they can have fan under, they can have lights, or, you know, the pay-fee parties, if you got electric, they can have cookers or whatever, and so. You got a lot of possibility there, but this, this is just too high-priced land right here, I think, to put a building on. Plus, if you build it, it needs to look great all the way around. This one, all it needs is concrete wall back. Basically, the way it is designed, your wall will be like eight to eight in height, and then you'd have to bring in your building, set on top of it, you know, for that.
Now, did you say that that backside there would be developed, set in tents up?
No, they want us to, but everything costs money.
Oh, okay, as I say, if you're gonna spend money for tents, then that will make the walkway safer for the kids first, yeah.
This, you know, like, when, in the scheme of things, you know, when these other buildings gets out, it's, oh, you're off, I don't know, I'd guess, I'd say it's probably gonna be close before we're actually parking it here.
Oh, yeah.
No one will have to walk, unless we have just, the band competitions and things like that, they probably would, but they wouldn't have to walk from the high school and things like that, once that whole development is done, as far as parking.
You know, where these trees over here behind the maintenance structure, that's developed always through there now, you got those little rock and stuff like that. And your bands, I think the bands itself, it's pretty much gonna use this whole thing. This, this tile is not here now, this drawn a little bit behind it, this tile, this head wall, and this one down here, this can be parking right on through there. The only thing that we have to weigh in this is electric line. Last year, when we built this electric line, it comes through here to electric, I had to take out trees and stuff for that electric line. Since then, with the extra, you know, dirt and everything like that, we cleared all this, and it's all, we just still have a hall around. If it's your dirt, we just, we have to do something, so we just built this at the same time.
What was that thing that was sticking up that people would hit?
The water base out there, the manhole.
And it's still there, I guess, isn't it?
What's that?
That manhole that's above the...
That's not finished, it's not the finished grade of paint on there either.
That manhole you're talking about, that's sticking above the blacktop, it's no longer above the blacktop.
Oh, good. Lisa about tore her car up.
And something else, you know, we've done, I guess, over here in that respect, I don't remember the last time we got around there, but once we took some of that block off the band wall, we widened that out a little bit where the baseball field is at, so, rather than having one lane of traffic up through there, you've actually, you can pass each other there. And when we get this, well, it's not on here, when we get that other blacktop in there, we didn't run that head wall that hard as much and stuff, they can come around through this parking lot right here, and they got a straight shot of here.
I feel much better about this location, like Larry said, if you're in the stands, and you look out there, it's angled to the stands, you know, and it'll have that pretty front on it, so it makes it more appealing, I think, that way than what I was initially thinking. And I like to quote Larry, "It's, we're making use of land that wouldn't be used otherwise to where and preserve the land there that's, that would still be good for handicap accessibility and otherwise."
I'll tell you another decision made on this, and part of it's because we didn't have the miner, that wasn't hard to scope the work at the time. The last few days, I worked with the headman, went over a little bit, they're doing basically the same thing y'all got here, and spread out a bit, they put their fieldhouse, their locker rooms, their public bathrooms, concession stands and everything under the bleachers. I don't like it. Y'all got all this in here, all this area right here, and up this bleachers, and so, that just, you know, you're not congested. Theirs is gonna be so congested, and this building, they got their football field, this building is the full length of the way through, and then your tents, and stuff back here, if people have a walk around and all that, we'll fix a bridge way through and get them one of those. I like y'all set up a lot better. You put your nose and football players and everything over here, while I'm out of the way to wait for the crowd, and I guess, I think y'all set up a lot, I like it better right now. Plus this, even on this building, you know, you got a concrete wall and stuff back here that's gonna be eight to eight, or whatever, it's gonna be a little just conventional maybe, but theirs is gonna be very difficult, and you got the building setting on the foundation of the bleachers and stuff. I just really have it just what it should have been. Sometimes I'm having that money to give us a replacement on this.
It'll look better that way. It should look better that way, and it wouldn't stuck up under the bleachers, look like you're trying to hide it.
It's gonna look so much better here, you got all the other side of the concession area.
Just that, Ms. Yoli.
Am I confusing enough? Does enough?
Yeah.
What are you down?
We put picnic tables and stuff in that one area there, couldn't we?
I've told this superintendent, y'all guys.
This is Mr. Ford?
Yeah. Well, I'm not calling names, I'm just saying superintendent.
Okay, I understand.
You've got all this area, I said I shut up, but I won't.
Okay.
When we concrete this on through here, you've got all this area, all that area, you should have some fences that's rubber coated, picnic tables and stuff like that, you've got a place right here that could work like Russell County Fire. People come to watch ballgames, well, I'll tell you one thing, I'll tell you one way it will work like it, when you get out here in a band competition, your kid performs at eight o'clock in the morning, and they don't give a two o'clock effort, what are you gonna do? You got concession stands here, you got places to sit and communicate. I think they would do that.
I think.
And you got, I'll tell you what, your tennis, need to talk to your tennis coach, he's really into it and stuff.
He's having a tennis match in September.
Hi.
He's having a tennis match in September.
He's gonna have a camp in July for kids, too.
Is the surface fixed on?
He's really excited about it, and how many things he could have in a row and stuff like that, your track and stuff like that, you're up here four days, you know, you can hope, you can hope state meet you.
Not to put you on the spot, Larry, but while you're up here, give, tell them an update on the track, and what have they done to this point with that texture?
Maybe you have to go walk the rubber tractor.
It's got a spring in your step.
It's like walking, if you've got a real place parked in your house, that's kind of what it is. This is what's on the track right now, of course, we don't have straps. Here in about two weeks, when you come out here, if you get up the bleachers and stuff, it's gonna change a lot, because I know that through those days, somebody flew a plane and, you know, showed you a lot of stuff, this gonna change one more time, big time, when they get all these straps, and all your stocking blocks and everything on this. That track, what it consists of, is it's basically three inches each, I think a lot of it they got a little different handle, but they come out there and they spray, actually some glue or bonding agent stuff on it, and then they put rubber on it, rubber that's basically the same characteristics that you've got in the ceiling in this right here, but they put it on as a spreader, and they just got four different layers on it. And every time they put a layer, then they go back over to the glue or the bonding agent until the last layer, and it just is leveling, looks just like this floor does, because it's on slope, I mean, it's full of plank, it's unsated down to the floor. And then they come in on the last one, and the best way to explain it would be like a whitetop sealer, I guess, they paint it all on the top and stick that top layer in there, you know, where the glue is holding from the bottom, and your top layer holds it to the top. And he says that on this, this guy, every time I've talked to, he comes out here with Jesse Henderson, this Tennessee technology, he says the kids really like to get on it for spikes, because when they get on it, it pops like these...
Bubble wrap.
Bubbles, you know, bubble wrap. He says they have a big time on it, and don't get to track much. That's really why you gotta have, my ass going across everywhere, the things going across.
We'll have a mat at all the entrance points to cross over.
It's gotta be really careful, you're not gonna hurt walking with your shoes on it and stuff like that, but the best thing to do is just off limits, except you get out there and need to walk on a seat, it's really gonna be kid training, because it's not gonna give shin splints or have any replacements and stuff like that. Make my little son follow me, that'll be true. That makes it better, whitetop. That's about all I know, I realize that.
They're probably alive.
Darrell, do you have any comments that, you had one playing the football?
He said.
Wait, do you have any, do you have any comments?
Do what, Ms. Brandon?
I don't know, me and Joey. What?
Eligibility for running track?
That's true.
Ms. Joey, Ms. Brandon wants to know if you and her have any eligibility to run a track.
I seriously doubt it.
Oh, she's got a bad...
I've got a preference in the, I definitely won't be running.
I'm not running, all right.
So, thank you, Mr. McGowan. So, I recommend approval of the fieldhouse location as presented on the attached drawing, which is what's up here versus what we've talked about over on the left-hand side.
This is for real.
This is for real. I mean, there are good plans, but this is where they will, they will position it.
We're not gonna change it.
We want it that way.
Well, I like that. I can see it.
I should have said something like that.
Yeah.
Is last fall...
I make the motion.
You've got specs, you gotta go by all this. Last fall, we got the tents, and we got the track. You have to have 30-day security now, whether it's concrete, blacktop, or whatever it is. When we done that, that put us down to November. To put these finishes off your track and your tents, you've got to darn teeth in them, it's gonna stay, keep it through, it's all better. And we couldn't do that, and that's the reason why we waited for spring, put these on, and we didn't take a chance on passing anything up, or giving somebody a help, if something didn't come out right. That's the reason why they, you got behind the concession stands, one big section of concrete we don't have, when you come down from the old baseball field and stuff, and point the track, and the tents, there'll be kind of a hole there, if they're coming down inside, or it'll take you back out toward the concession stands, it'll take you over to the practice football field, or take you up on the tents. We did not put that in, because I did want people running trucks and stuff over to be concrete, just when we get there, I'd like for it to be a roof. And I chose, I haven't poured any concrete out there on any of that since last November. We're probably gonna start maybe as early as next week, when we're sure that everybody's done, and we'll go ahead and finish that concrete up. Then, we will put down some more sod, most of the rest of it is just gonna be seen.
Brett has already made a motion, I'm gonna need a second.
I'll second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Next item on the agenda is 2024-2025 district funding assurances.
The next three meetings, this one, the June 28th meeting, and then the regular July, is a lot of things that you all see yearly, and this has been one of them. The 24-25 district funding assurances, every, I'll just read the staff note, federal and state programs provide financial support for the implementation of the district's comprehensive improvement plan under the supervision of each program director. The fiscal year 25 district funding assurances and statements are attached for your review and approval. In your, in your staff note with your attachments, you'll note that each one of these has some obligations, if you will, that the district has to go by. If we, if we take the funding, we have to agree to do X, Y, Z, and that's why each one of those are noted as a yes, and then once you're all's approval, I finish filling out that statement like I do every year, and upload that back to the Kentucky Department of Education. In essence, it just says, if we take those funds in each of those areas, that we spend them on how the grant award says that we are allowed to. So, I recommend the Russell County Board of Education approve the 24-25, the fiscal year 25 district funding assurances as presented.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is fidelity, performance bonds of treasure.
Okay, another one of those items I referenced that we do every year, per KRS 160.560 and 702 KAR3:080, it's the duty of each local board of education to bond its treasurer and any other school employee who's responsible for the board of education funds. Bonds are attached for your review and approval. I recommend approval of the performance bonds for the 24-25 school year. Bonds are attached for your review and approval. I recommend approval of the performance bonds for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is application for adjunct instructor certificate rate of pay.
Okay, you all have seen this, I mean, you've had it in your board book, but we've seen this before and we've, we've done this before. And I'm, I for one, I'm pleased to see it back, but it's the EMT class again for a high school. And so our local EMTs will provide that instruction. They will be considered adjunct instructors. Ms. Vols, and thank you, Ms. Vols, works with them on their credentialing to get their certificate from the Educational Professional Standards Board. So I'll just read the staff notes, KRS one sixty-one dot zero four six and KRS one sixty-one dot zero four eight. Calls for each board of education to approve part-time positions and the positions be filled by the best qualified candidates available as determined by the factors of academic preparation, prior teaching experience or related educational work, exceptional work experience, and the personal attributes compatible with the demands of the teaching profession for the specialty area for which certification is sought. This is one of those out of the realm of your normal classes is the EMT class. So the employment of this person in this part-time position will not result in the displacement of a qualified teacher with a regular certificate who is already employed in the district for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And applicants must sustain a good moral character, be at least eighteen years of age, and of course, will complete all the background checks. And the application for the adjunct instructors needed for our EMT class at the high schools start again for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As I noted, local paramedics will teach the class at the rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. That's what's on our approved salary schedule for any teachers that do any extra work. Five hours of instruction per week and then the two hours of planning for a total of seven hours. Occasionally, as had been in the past, additional instructors will come. It depend upon the skill that's being taught. It takes two paramedics or something to do that, to do that class. So really fortunate, I guess it's all right for me to say that Mr. Scotty Weston is gonna be the main instructor of the course. And so we're really proud with that. He has all the, kind of the best of both worlds. He has all the education experience and then all the knowledge for that as well. So we're really excited about that. He's got a great demeanor. He's really excited. And I think it's gonna be really good for our students that participate in that. So I recommend approval of the adjunct instructor certificate and that the adjunct instructors be paid twenty-five dollars per hour, five dollars for five hours of instruction per week with two hours of planning per week for a total of seven hours.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Your second.
I'll say.
Vote.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mrs. Vols, do you recall how many students are, were interested?
I, I've not, I'm not.
Okay, I can't remember.
Probably, probably definitely not, not in one class.
Right, no, it is just one class.
Next item on the agenda is contract memorandum agreements.
Jason? We have had some of these before and some of them are new, but we've done the MOA with Somerset Community College for the dual credit courses now for a number of years. Grab is our Green River Regional Educational Cooperative. That is our educational cooperative that the district belongs, belongs to. They also, also offer an MOA for occupational therapy services. Our current occupational therapist has more on our caseload than what she can have by licensure, and it just gives us a backup. University of Kentucky, this is a clinical practice agreement for student teachers from UK for the twenty-four through the twenty-six school year. And then this is really exciting and really appreciate this. If we can find one, we're working hard and so is the hospital. But for a trainer for our athletic department with the, uh, Lake Cumberland Regional Hospital in Somerset, they will provide that trainer free of charge to the district. We will be responsible for the supplies and things like that, but they, they provide the trainer. I've had a meeting with them, more than one meeting for, going back a couple of months now. But this is the, the agreement to, that you all would approve. It's hard to find a certified trainer, and that's where they're, that's where they're at, trying to find it.
So what's all sports or just the?
Yeah, prioritize obviously for those high impact varsity sports in the seasons. But they be on campus and would, you know, travel as, as needed and it's a, it's a good. And like I said, they do not charge the district for that. So really appreciate Lake Cumberland Regional Hospital and this, this training agreement. Just pray that we can find a trainer. So they're working on that and on their end. And I've also put it out there, I know Mr. Carpenter's put it out there on the A D listserv, Athletic Director listserv. I put it out on the superintendent listserv, just, you know, anybody knows anybody to send them our way. They would apply, of course, directly to, to the Somerset Hospital. So that's exciting, much needed. I know you all agree with that on that. Just hope that we can find one. So I recommend approval of the contracts or memorandums of agreements. That's been approved by the board attorney.
Make a motion. Second.
I'll say.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
Okay, we have two groups requesting approval for the out-of-state and/or overnight. We have one out-of-state and one overnight. FFA, June twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth for the FFA leadership in Hardensburg, Kentucky. And July thirty-first through August thirty-first, not August the third, I'm sorry, not a whole month. That'd be a one big football camp, Russell County High School football, the Wise Football Camp at the University of Virginia. I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips as presented.
Second. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent evaluation information.
So at that last meeting of the fiscal year, of the school year, you all always complete the superintendent's evaluation. I've given you all the blank standards to complete and, and look at and review. I'll give you the other information at the next board meeting. But typically, Mr. Kazook, at that June twenty-eighth, or that last board meeting that we have, we always have two regular ones in June. You all will complete that. So in the red folder is a, a blank copy. And then, of course, on your electronic copy, there's that as well. So it's not changed anything since the previous, past several years. So there's no action or anything for that tonight?
Well, I've been feeling mine now sitting here.
Oh, goodness. There's a shredder out there. I'll charge Jackie getting that away from you.
I'm joking.
Next, next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-four Russell County Schools Policy and Procedures Update, first reading.
Okay, so no action required on this. Mrs. Dameron works hard and we appreciate Kentucky School Boards Association giving us the proposed updates and procedures. Ms. Dameron's gonna run over some highlights and you all have all those in your packet.
Okay, so this is my tenth summer doing this with you all. And I said, the pages are still about the same, about a hundred pages. But the actual presentation keeps getting shorter and shorter because our lawmakers are pretending to put more things into actual statutes that are required. So a lot of what you see in front of you, it's required. But we'll still just kind of, I'm gonna give you kind of a brief update of what's in here. Okay, so the legal updates mean the things that KRS is requiring us to do now. Basically cover, there's a policy in there about liability insurance. There's a couple of things in there about district planning and reporting of trauma form practices and school improvement plans. Those are just small changes. There's a legal update about the acceptable documentation that we can accept for high school completion of board members to show that high school completion of board members. Training requirements, you saw a policy update for training requirements for board members. There's some updated language for SROs and the possibility of us using guardians in the future. We actually have dedicated SRO at every school plus a district safety, school safety coordinator and head SRO. So even though we require that language, we might not necessarily utilize that. There's a legal update in there about the appropriate documentation for clearing up employees for hiring. Updated reporting for use, possession and sale of controlled substance on school grounds, issuance of bond. There's a few safety updates in there that address how we provide school map information to our first responders. We meet with our first responders every summer.
We have that scheduled for next month.
They walk our schools, we give them maps, those kind of things. Officer Brighter's still working with the Skinner Center for School Safety. We talked about this today, about whether that school mapping thing means that there's something specific we need to do or a specific program or if what we do is acceptable. But either way, we're, we, we always do that anyway, so we'll make sure that we're in compliance with that, whatever the nuts and bolts part of that means. There are legal updates in there for better protocol of how the courts will give us information about a student who is potentially a threat. And again, there's some specifics on reporting illegal activity for an employee. As well as there's an expansion that we're required to do of our suicide prevention training. Right now, we do suicide prevention education with grades, students in grades six through twelve. And we do education for our teachers in suicide prevention, grades six through twelve. That's being expanded for just the teachers, not the students, down to grades four and five, which is a sad thing. But it's good that we're gonna be proactive and training them in the signs and, of warning signs of possible suicide. But again, that does not change for our students. We will not be doing that education for students that way. Although the school guidance council do a fabulous job with other things that are precursors to that. Also, we will be looking, we'll be working on a student transportation policy that will come back to you. The actual policy you're gonna, that's presented to you is the legal language that we have to implement. But it also requires that we're gonna do a whole student transportation policy that we're gonna look at with principals and with Mr. Wolfert. And we're gonna work on that this summer and get that back to you when we do the code of conduct book that'll be presented in late July. So the language that's in here, we'll be in compliance with that by the time school starts.
Greg, our educational cooperative is also working on that on behalf of the member districts on what that policy looks like for school districts.
Yes. Additionally, House Bill one forty-two is requiring us to update policy zero nine point four two three two, which is our tobacco vaping, tobacco products alternative tobacco product policy, to include punitive measures as well as interventions in the form of education to both students and parents when there's been a student violation of a vapor tobacco product. As with the transportation policy, the language that's in here that you're looking at is what the statute requires us to have. But we'll be meeting with principals and school staff this summer to see what kind of revision we need to make to our student code of conduct policy so that we're in compliance with that by July one. So you'll see that come back to you again on the student version of that. There is a recommended update to policy zero eight point two three. That's the language, I think it's called harm to stu-, harm. It's the language of the, it's the language of the policy where a parent or guardian can bring to you a concern about a specific educational material that their student might be exposed to. The recommendation simply adds what we would have already done and what was applied anyway, that if the board chooses to say, no, we, we, we're okay with this and they're gonna go ahead and teach this, that the parent can just request that their child abstain from that, from having access to it. And we would have done that anyway, but now it's in policy, so, or it's being required in policy. And then finally, KRS two one eight B point zero four five requires you as a board to enact a policy that will either permit or prohibit the use of medicinal cannabis by a student on school property. So you have a choice to make in that, whether your policy will permit it or prohibit it. I'm requesting on behalf of our school nurses, our SROs and our entire student services department that you vote to prohibit it, not as an indictment against personal choice of treatment, but because we just all feel like it's too new to Kentucky, even to the state government and the general public. They don't even know how to navigate it yet. So we're just hoping that you'll agree with us that school's not the place to work out the kids.
Yeah, and there's some provisions within that, even if, if you all, the board and I, Ms. Dameron and I, of course, talked about through all this. Even if it were to be approved by the board, we have to have provision to where the school nurse says opt out. I'm, I'm not administering that because there's only two people that, that it would be allowed to within the school district. The school nurse or the child's guardian or parent. And they would have to come on for the medical marijuana. And they would have to come on to campus to do that. And I like how Mrs. Dameron worded that. I don't think school's the, the place to work out everything else that's going on with that, with that subject and so.
Because you always have the option to revisit it down the road, you know, this, but for now, we would request that, we would request that. There are several groups that I'm, I'm requesting that you prohibit that for the time being, that we just let the government and the general public work that out first. Okay, do you have any questions?
And just as a reminder, when you all go through these, and I know you already have from your board packet, but those changes are highlighted, you know, so you can, yeah, I'm seeing everybody shaking their head just. So as you go through that, you see those different colors and what's struck through and what's, what's changed with that. Thank you, Ms. Dameron. So there's, again, there's no action to take tonight, because that's just the first reading.
Next item on the agenda is special education policy update, first reading.
So unlike school board policies related to just general functions of the board, special education policies are rarely updated by the state. Two thousand and eight was actually our last update by, unless some district just, just did something really, really unique. With this one, it's just changes noted to special education policies reflect prior written notice to parents. And then the definition, and we're not changing that definition, it's the recommendation coming down from the state, the definition of the hearing impaired and vision impaired. So again, just like the regular policies that Mrs. Dameron just presented, this is just the first reading and there's no action that's required. And Mrs. Dick has those copies in there that I provided to you for your, for your review.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports.
Okay, this summer's always busy with personnel, so we have a, a list to go through here. Ms. Diana Sullivan, retiring Jameson Elementary School kindergarten teacher. Reva Brown, retiring Jameson Elementary School cook cashier. Trina Jones, hired Jamestown, Jamestown Elementary Exceptional Education LBD teacher. Rachel Tate, hired Jamestown Elementary School MSD teacher. Peyton Coomer, hired for Jamestown P five teacher. Tracy Bunch, hired Jamestown Special Education LBD teacher. Carvin Hadley, retiring Jamestown Elementary School LBD teacher. Colin Darnell, hired Russell Springs Elementary School PE teacher. Erica McCormick, hired Russell Springs Elementary School Family Resource Center assistant. Julie Burton, resigning Russell Springs Elementary School teacher. Nicholas Minyard, hired Salem Elementary School P five teacher. Debbie Wilson, resigned Russell County Middle School Girls eighth grade basketball coach. Sarah Aaron, hired Russell County Middle School Assistant Principal. Keith Brown, resigning Russell County Middle School Assistant Baseball Coach, hired Russell County Middle School Head Softball Coach. Brian Remley, hired Russell County Middle School Assistant Baseball Coach. Nathan McQuary, hired Russell County Middle School Science teacher. Haley Gray, hired Russell County Middle School Mathematics teacher. Ally Santa Benitez, resigning Russell County Middle School teacher. Adam Turner, hired Russell County High School Assistant Football Coach. Dan Lewis, hired Russell County High School Assistant Football Coach. Tiffany Carnes, resigning Russell County High School Mathematics teacher. Missy Jo McLandless, hired Russell County High School cook cashier. Dana Ferguson, transferred from, from Russell Springs to Salem as a special education teacher. And Jamie Garner, transferred from a regular education teacher at Salem to Jamestown Elementary School Special Education teacher. And Lindsay Stevens, transferred to the itinerant position that's split between Jamestown Elementary School and Russell Springs Elementary School. David Williams, transferred from the middle school to Russell Springs Elementary School P five teacher. And Susan Walters, hired district-wide instructional coach, be placed at Jamestown.
At the same time, you don't get a lot of personnel.
Moving around.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody have, want to make a comment? Have they, say?
Sorry, you can't go more.
This is, this is second session.
Exactly what a little, uh, the walkway, the building, uh, we can look at, you know, and, uh, good for, I think, Doug Good's work last night, but, you know, other ideas. I mean, whenever you can here, you know, go steal, it'll be the one. They'll come to, that's something more again.
Yeah.
Yeah. You told me I couldn't.
No.
I've had several people talking about after school. Is it ruled out for this coming year or do we know for sure yet?
They'll have limited, but with the stimulus funds, Mr. Murray, from the beds is how we funded that.
Is there any way we could maybe publicly fund or anything could, I mean, what would actually be the cost of our neighborhood? You know, I don't know how long it'd even last. What, probably hour a day or something?
Typically about, close to about an hour and a half. It's, it usually ends around four. It's, most of the schools dismiss it around 2:30.
Yeah, you know, I know, I had a few people mention, says, you know, they need, you know, people with help, they'd be willing to donate some, you know, just to keep it going. So, you know, I don't know.
Well, every, every school, if there's one in particular that you can talk to me about private, every school will have some model of, of using the ESS funds of after school. It just cannot be to the degree that it was because those funds are gone with that. But if there's somebody that you need me to reach out to specifically.
Well, I know that, I, I would ask about it. There've been a couple, three different ones called.
Every, every school will have some degree. It just will not be like it used to be for the past few years with the stimulus funds.
Well, I thought maybe we lost a lot of funding on it or something. I didn't know.
We, we were able to offer what we did and do all that because of those ARP funds, the ESSR funds.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I did, wanted any way you could make up.
COVID money. The COVID money. The best times, Mr. Murray, was years ago when the state funded the transportation to go along with it. Because oftentimes, the kiddos that really need to stay, they need, they need a bus to get them back home. Because parents may be at work or just a lot of different situations. That was when it was best, when we had buses that rolled a second round to get kids back home.
Yeah.
Been a few years.
There's mostly just more or less people picking up now, ain't it?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Second.
All a favor. I wanted to hit another subject, but I'll get to the next meeting.
So June, just as a reminder, the June 28th meeting is a regular meeting. That's on our regular schedule. It's not a special, it's 12 o'clock. Yeah, so we close out the fiscal year with it.